Everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, July 27, 2015. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon...
It's President.
Martin...
Here.
Pollocka...
Here.
Piana... And Mayor Holton.
Here, thank you. We have a forum this evening. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Your honor, I'd like to make a change to the agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to remove Presentation C, the Housing Commission Updates. Councilwoman Piana had several questions there, as well as we have our next board meeting on Wednesday, so I'd like to just defer that to the next council meeting.
All right. Was that a friendly amendment, Councilman Pollocka?
Very acceptable.
All right.
So I'll support the motion.
All right.
With the modification.
With the modification.
So the agenda as modified has been moved by Pollocka, supported by Martin. Any discussion on the agenda? Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Martin...
Yes.
Pollocka...
Yes.
Lennon...
Yes.
And Mayor Holton.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. So moving on now, we have three presentations, the first one being our July Beautification Awards. And I'm told that we have a new chair of the Beautification Committee. Robin, you have graciously agreed to not only chair, but to present the awards tonight, I understand.
Correct.
Excellent.
Hello, Council.
Hello.
Yes, after Suzanne Rowe stepped down, there was an election, and it appears that I was selected as the chair.
You weren't there.
I was at the meeting, but only for three times prior to that. So, there you go. Do we have the... There you go. The first business that we wanted to recognize was the commercial property. This is Fusco, Schaefer, and Papas here at 550 East Nine Mile. They're actually right across the street from us here at Blooms. We loved what they did with this very wonderful redo of the whole building. The landscape is nice, it's clean, there's a lot of repetition in the design. They used paccasandra as the ground cover. We just thought it was an excellent look for that commercial corporate property. So that was our selection for the commercial award. Residential Award, the first one, is 1859 signs. Ironically, this was actually, and I wasn't aware of it until just a few minutes ago, one of our former delivery drivers from the flower shop, this is his home. We were impressed by the fact that unlike most traditional residences, there is no grass lawn. It's all low maintenance, using stone and gravel. Ed Nice is the owner of the property here, and he really enjoys a lot of variety of materials. So it's quite an eclectic mix of plants in front of their house. So that was the one that we thought was really interesting this month. The next residential award is 575 West Maplehurst. And I believe the owners, Paula and Rick Eckhold, are here.
Yeah.
Awesome. We thought your house was quite lovely, and the landscape. It's very nice, clean. I love the sweeping lines from the driveway all the way in around to the right of the house. It works very well with that very wonderful blue color you've got going on. How long have you owned the house?
Two years.
Wow, awesome. Any opportunities that you had to deal with when you moved in, as far as the landscape?
Twenty-four years. Oh, well, we had lots of... We had many distractions, we were very positive. We really had the same brands that's here in Ferndale.
Right.
That's really great.
Well, it looks...
Beautiful idea.
It looks lovely. Thank you. Thank you so much. The third residential award is 270 East Troy. This one, I'm not really sure who the owner is, but when you leave this afternoon, if you look right across the street, it's right here behind us. I really, as a designer, love the way that this person has incorporated some really cool elements into the design. Those red pots add, as our clients like to say, when they come to us, a pop of color on either side of the door, which just sort of attracts your eye into that. So we thought they did a wonderful job of including things that are not necessarily just plants in the landscape. And it's a great contrast to the more traditional settings that you see around some of the other homes. And this last home is 355 West Troy. This one is owned by Ms. Francine Hatcham, who happens to be here in the crowd with us as well. I think most everyone knows Francine. She does get around a bit here in Ferndale. We were really, really impressed by, and I don't know if you planned this or not, we're gonna say you did, Francine. This is a wonderful complementary color scheme. It uses reds against a green background, which complementary color schemes are those which the colors are so opposite that they go together. It's like red and green at Christmas, it's like yellow and violet in the spring, blues and oranges in the fall. It's a complementary scheme. It looks really, really nice, and it helps that landscape to stand out, as opposed to just being green on green on green. And you've been doing quite a bit of work there in the yard, because it's very neat and clean and organized, and we love it. Any comments?
No.
You're welcome.
I do organize the color scheme.
Awesome.
It was over a couple glasses of wine.
Wine always sells. Yes. So those are our presentations for the residences and the commercial. The last one we have is the Cone Flower Award. This particular address, appropriately, is called 295 Jewel. And we thought that the cone flowers on the corner, there were quite a jewel for people to enjoy as they're driving by. Again, I'm not really sure who the owner of this home is, but very nicely done the use of the cone flower in the landscape. And there you have it, for the month of July.
Beautiful, beautiful homes.
I'm sorry? Upcoming nominations?
I was gonna ask you, by the way, do they get certificates, or the folks...
Yes, there will be, I believe, some that are...
They've come in...
September, yes.
In September.
My committee back here is helping me.
Yeah, you're the new chair.
I understand.
You're the new chair.
A couple of things that are coming up for the future. August, of course, Beautification Awards. Then later, we will have the Bootyful Ferndale, which is all around Halloween, the Holiday Lights Display, and then the Block Awards as well.
Excellent.
Awesome. Thank you.
Nice job, Mr. Chair, thank you, and...
If I may through the chair?
Yes.
How can someone be nominated?
Very easily. In fact, all it really takes is someone going to our Facebook page and nominating. There's also a form, if they want to get really specific, that's available for people to fill out. A lot of times, we just get emails and comments on our Facebook, says, "I'd like to nominate someone, you know, this address for something." And then we compile all of those, and then we start, you know, running around all over the city looking at them.
Yeah.
So, there you go.
Excellent.
Did I answer that correctly?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Robin, appreciate it.
My pleasure.
All right. Our next presentation is Ferndale Area District Library, but I could... Oh, there, oh, yes, okay, there you are, you're in the sun there. And our newest trustee is here to update us on all the happenings at the library. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Adam Steiman, Ferndale Area District Library Board. So I haven't come to give a presentation, I've come to publicly thank a group of supporters who volunteer a lot of their own time and energy to engage the community in race funds for the Ferndale Area District Library. They're the Friends of the Ferndale Library, and just some of their sponsorships to the library have been the donation of the Aw Early Learning Computer Stations, the donation of the Playful Minds Early Learning Area in the children's section. They operated a raffle for a prototype Herman Miller Ames Chair last year that gave the pair proceeds to the library. There was a recent selection of brand-new how-to DVDs that the library had requested, which they donated. They organized and volunteered at fundraising events, like the beer and soda tent on Troy Street during the Pink Whiskey Festival last weekend. And by putting their time and energy to support the library, they've donated over $13,000 in the last fiscal year alone. And of course, they run the Friends Bookstore inside the library. So we really can't thank them enough, but we try. On behalf of the Ferndale Area District Library, thank you to the Friends of the Ferndale Library, especially their board, Special Events Chair Beth O'Connor, Membership Chair Janelle Rogers, Secretary Catherine C. Beneller, Treasurer Miranda Ross, Bookstore Committee Chair June Axelrod, Vice President Jenny Hagerty, and President Kelly Farah. If anyone wants to get involved, join the Friends of the Ferndale Library during their monthly meetings, every second Monday of the month at 6:30, usually right inside the library, in one of the front meeting rooms. And I encourage everybody to visit theferndalfriends.org and donate $20 to give your family a year membership to this great organization.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Appreciate you being here. An hour left. Presentation is the Downtown Development Authority, and I see Cindy is here from the DDA to update us on all the latest happenings downtown.
Good evening, Cindy Lookout, Ferndale DDA. We are excited about all the upcoming events in downtown that we're not putting on, but other great people are putting on, like the Pub Crawl and the Green Cruise, and I know Craig and Dave are both here to talk about that, and of course, the Dream Cruise. Our next event is our next Get Real Outdoor movie, which will be August 20th. Appropriate for August, it's Frozen. The single-along version, so be sure to tune up your voices and come on out and join us on Zacher Street on August 20th.
It might come in costume, is that right?
You can, absolutely. I have a hat that's got the little braids, if you would like to wear it, and I'll make sure to let you wear it. We're happy to announce that we have had the opportunity to collaborate with a bunch of upcoming projects with the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce. They are going to co-produce the holiday hoof with us this year. So we're really excited to be able to partner with them, and then moving forward, be able to help each other out with our run events, and kind of start branding Ferndale Run Events together, to get bigger participation and awareness. So that's exciting. We're also going to work together to expand our Small Business Saturday campaign for shopping and supporting small businesses during the holidays. And finally, we're also going to be working on a volunteer event, kind of volunteer speed dating kind of thing, where we're going to bring in some other nonprofits, everybody will get a table, and give the community an opportunity to come out and see just what kind of volunteer opportunities are available in Ferndale, and for all the different organizations to also lead each other, and hopefully that'll lead to some more collaboration and sharing of volunteers on an as needed basis as comes up. So we're really excited to be working with the chamber. Ashley would have been here with me tonight, but she's on vacation. And finally, we just want to congratulate Easy Like Sunday, Aaron Stone, and his new bride Katie, on their recent marriage.
Beautiful.
And that's all that. Thanks.
Thank you, Cindy, appreciate it. All right, that concludes our presentations. The next item of business then would be called Audience. This is the audience's opportunity to come and speak before council on any issue that's not on the agenda, because you can speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda. You get three minutes to say whatever you like, so just come on up and give us your name and your address, and the three minutes is yours. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you kindly. Thank you to the City Council, the staff. I am Craig Covey, and I am here because it's the end of July, and we are to promote the annual Ferndale Pub Crawl. As Cindy mentioned, this is the time of the year for that event. Actually, it is the 19th Annual Ferndale Pub Crawl, if you can believe it. I was barely in my twenties when I started this event.
Your nose is growing.
Councilman, I'll tell some stories about you.
Okay, I'll... Proceed.
It has a glorious history. I will hang the poster. But it is this coming Friday, if you're watching this council meeting prior to the 31st of July, it's always the last Friday of the month. It's a walking tour of the downtown clubs, pubs, bars, and restaurants in Ferndale. We believe it's now the longest-running annual pub crawl in the state of Michigan, and one of the largest. I think just about, actually, everyone, I don't know if April you've been to the crawl, but everyone else at the table has been to the crawls before, including the city attorney, who's been to quite a few of them, I might add.
He has. Really are busting people. We got stories, too, yeah. We have photos.
We actually cut down on the number of stops, it was just so out of control, and some of us aren't as young as we used to be, so we're down to... What are you laughing at, Robin? Jeez. Oh, okay, not old. I think there's 13 or 14 stops this year. And of course, it's a fundraiser. It raises money for three charities, including Michigan AIDS Coalition, Ferndale Community Foundation, Freud Derby Girls, and there's one more.
Youth Assistance?
I don't think it's Youth Assistance.
Auxiliary?
Ferndale Auxiliary, thanks, Council. So again, you simply could show up at Boogie Fever, or now it's called Twist, anytime from 6:30 to 9:00. We ask for a $12 donation, that gets you into all of these clubs without paying any cover charge. Obviously, we don't encourage people to have an adult beverage at every one of those stops, although some of you can pull that off. But there's no driving involved, no vehicles, no motor vehicles, it's strictly a walking event. We have some sponsors that have been very helpful, Rosie O'Grady's, Annette and Jack Aronson, One-Eyed Betties, Tito's, which is the sponsor of the vodka this year, Shram's Mead, Allstate Insurance, Deliverno Lounge, the bar downstairs, Hotel Royal Oak, myself, Mayor Proctem Martin, between the lines, and a number of other sponsors. So Mayor, we'd love to have you come this year if you can. There's a long tradition going back to Mayor Gaddard of sending people off to the crawl. I know Councilman Pollocka is a volunteer. So again, thank you kindly for allowing me to promote this, and it'll be a safe event. The Ferndale Police are always very, very supportive, and we do make a donation to the auxiliary when it's all said and done. Thank you kindly.
Excellent. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Dave Hopstraw from 16th and Goldfield, and co-chair of the Sierra Club Green Cruise. August is fast approaching, which means it's Green Cruise time, a family environmental event to celebrate human-powered forces of transportation. Our event is Saturday, August 8th, on East Nine Mile at Woodward. The Green Cruise includes a parade, the children's area, the Green Street Exhibition area, nearby stores and restaurants that are sponsors, bicycle rides, amusement ride, and musicians that's grown over the years. Green Street activities are from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and include the children's area, the craft sidewalk chalk, face painting, and Whirl-Ed Vert amusement ride. We have three bicycle rides, the 8:00 a.m. 40-mile bike ride to Belle Isle, a 9:00 a.m. 22-mile Birmingham ride, and the 1:00 p.m. 4-mile family ride. Registration and payment for the long bike rides is through our website, sierraclub.org/greencruise. There's a $10 preregistration and $15 the day of the event. We're using Eventrite, the Bright, to do registration. It should go very smoothly this year. At 12:00 noon, we'll be the Green Celebration Parade, one-half-mile parade on East Nine Mile Road. Dress up, wear costumes, bring your wagon parade float, skateboard, rollerblades, bikes, dogs, and strollers. I just learned that the Beautification Committee is going to, you know, the Arts Committee is going to be helping us with the parade. A few of our sponsors will be at the Green Street Exhibition area are Michigan Solar Solutions, the Regional Transportation Authority, Livewell, Tyrocratic, where we give free massages in Calum and Bike and Fitness. Sponsors near to the Green Cruise Festival area include Imperial, or the Public House, Howie's Bayou, Ferndale Bike Shop, Weston Market, Holiday Market, Found Sound, Modern Natural Baby, and the scene to open Greenspace Cafe in West Nine Mile. Come to the Green Cruise on Saturday, August 8th, on East Nine Mile at Woodward. Join us in celebrating the many forms of human-powered transit that help keep you and the planet healthy. So, any questions?
The date again, just...
Saturday, August 8th.
Saturday, August 8th. My only question is, did I hear the rumor correctly, that you're celebrating a birthday tomorrow?
Yeah, that's true.
Happy birthday, Dave.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything you do in our community, and we look forward to another great Green Cruise.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for Dave? Thanks, Dave, appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, council members, I'm Bob Wilson, I think I know pretty much everybody up there. As you know, I did a project, developed a project across the street, and I've done three projects, and the fourth on the way in Royal Oak. And about a year and a half ago, and by the way, five years ago, six years ago, we kept making presentations to try to do a city center, either on this side of town or on the other side of town. Fast forward about a year and a half ago, a year and a quarter ago, I was trying to, you guys brought in the 360 group, or Derek brought in them, we supported it, because we thought if there was a way to get office space, a considerable amount of office space, then why would we object to it? We didn't necessarily believe in it. But it's been a year. One of the things that was said in that agreement was that we were one of the other chosen developer, you know, to get involved in this, if for some reason maybe they didn't fulfill their obligations or what their requirements were gonna be. We'd never got a call back, one, three months ago, and kind of, I guess our point at this point would be, we would love the opportunity to show how we can build a parking deck for the city on half of the lot, not all of the lot. And instead of it being a dream, it can be a reality. I believe we could put 100 units there, figure out how to do parking because of the new increased monies that are coming in from the parking, you know, new parking machines, and I think increased revenues. There is a way to do this, and it can bring in a couple of hundred people, probably new to the city, probably increase the dollars spent to the people that have businesses here by, you know, $5 million worth of new revenue. We would love the opportunity. I brought in another company that we were gonna partner with, which is Sam Beznos and his company. They have done 15,000 apartments that they own and operate, and we still are very high on trying to figure out a way to do it. We would very much appreciate the opportunity to take a much shorter time to review it with the council, or to get an opportunity to show you how we can do it, and how we think we can make it a reality. And that's pretty much it. I hope I hit most of the bases that I wanted to. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but if you can give us that opportunity, we would very much look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. I'm Sam Beznos from the BezTech Companies. I've been working with Bob on the project, which he just discussed, you know, over a year and a half ago. We were involved probably, you know, six months in active conversations with Derek and some of the staff before it even went to the council meeting in March of 2014. And we were very disappointed with the outcome, but understood the desire, as Bob mentioned, to go with the 360 team, despite their lack of sort of experience, in my opinion, and also their, you know, the ability to get, attract the office tenants there. But I understood why they were chosen, and certainly felt disappointed at the time, given all the investment of time and meetings and designs that we came up with. And I really want to have the opportunity, which we thought we would have if they didn't get chosen, if they didn't end up going through, which was what we heard at the meeting in March 2014, that someone would let us know if it didn't work out, and we'd have an opportunity to discuss it further. I understand that they didn't, that the project didn't work out for various reasons, and we still think we can deliver a project that works and meets the objectives of the city, as well as the neighborhood and DDA and other people that are involved. And we really would like the opportunity to, you know, present our plan and hear that out further. My company, you know, has developed many apartments, and we're active building. We just completed a project in Birmingham, and we're building in Canton right now. We're building in Naples, Florida, or we're developing a project in Ann Arbor, we're developing a project in North Carolina. We certainly have the wherewithal, the expertise, and the market knowledge to develop something, and we really would like to enter the Ferndale market. We've been looking at it for a very long time. So I'm not sure where it goes from here, but I just wanted to echo the point that Bob made, that we would really like the opportunity to be heard on the plan. I'm not sure where, what is going on now, now that the project sort of died, and we're exploring other opportunities. So anyways, thank you for your time, thank you for listening to us, and I hope to see you guys all soon.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to, excuse me, to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless something is pulled from the consent agenda. But let me read that for you now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular and special meetings held July 13, 2015. Item B is the adoption of a condolence resolution for Tom Waller, as submitted by our Chief of Police. Item C is the adoption of condolence resolution for Detective Tom Catell, as submitted by our Chief of Police. Item D is the adoption of a resolution for the city's request for reimbursement from Oakland County under the West Nile Virus Program. Item E is the approval for the mayor to sign the agreement to assign wholesale customer water contract and adopt the resolution regarding assignment agreement with the City of Detroit and the Great Lakes Water Authority, as submitted by our Director of Public Works. Item F is the approval of a municipal and community credit contract for fiscal year 2016, and to authorize the mayor or designate to sign the contract, as submitted by our Recreation Director. Item G is the approval of the 39-month printer lease agreement and maintenance service agreement with Toshiba Business Solutions, in an amount not to exceed $10,000 annually, as submitted by our Chief Innovation Officer. And finally, item H is the approval of the bills and payroll, as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to the review by the Council Finance Committee. What is the pleasure of council on the consent agenda this evening?
A move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support. By Martin and supported by Pollocka. Now, any discussion on the consent agenda? And I think Councilman Lennon, you've...
We have two resolutions here, Your Honor.
Yes.
For two individuals that worked for the city that passed away in the last week, I'd like to read them.
Please do.
Okay, Tom Waller was our Animal Patrol Officer. He passed away this week. Tom Waller was a longtime resident of Ferndale, who served this community with honor and dedication, starting as a police intern in November 91. He was appointed in September of 94 to the position of Animal Patrol Officer, until his resignation on June 25, 2010. Tom Waller was a credit to his family and to his community, and it was with deep sorrow that we mourn his loss.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate that.
I had the pleasure of working with both of these gentlemen. Tom Catell, Tom Catell served this community with honor and dedication. On February 1, 1953, Tom joined the Ferndale Police Department. After serving 16 years in the Patrol Division, he was appointed to the Detective Bureau of May of 1969, until his retirement on January 9, 1979. Tom Catell was a credit to his family and to his community, and it was with deep sorrow that we mourn his loss.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you reading that, Mike, thank you. Any other discussion on the consent agenda?
I have one.
Yes.
Item 6G is the printer lease agreement. I have a couple of questions, actually, one question. There's a difference in yearly cost of about $4.08, and I'm wondering, what was the criteria used to select one over the other? I know you chose the cheapest, but was it because it was the cheapest? Or was it better service? And I ask this because I... products and have always had excellent service from them. I've never had Toshiba Business Solutions, so I don't know what, what level of service they have, and I just hope we're not going based solely on cost.
No, no. In this case, cost didn't really determine much of anything. So, we did like the packages that Toshiba provided as far as cost per copies. They offered the city a pooled option. So, rather than restricting one copy to X amount of limits, every city shares the same pool. So, every printer can draw up that same pool of monthly, monthly images.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments on the consent agenda? If not, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is the consideration of a resolution to amend the city charter, modifying the process for counting nominating petition signatures and clarifying the filing deadlines. Councilman Pollocka, do you want to introduce that, or?
Um, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass it over to Dan. I brought it up at last council meeting, but I think Dan will have, be more eloquent in the conversation.
Well, I'm not sure about that. But, Chair, before you this, this evening is a draft resolution for consideration. It does touch on the issues that Councilman Pollocka had raised at the council last meeting as it relates to some revisions that were made to the Michigan election law, which created an inconsistency with respect to the city of Ferndale's charter as it relates to nominating petitions. Specifically, there were two issues. One, with respect to the deadline associated with a potential applicant submitting the nominated petitions, and because of that inconsistency, state election law governs and controls, but it was, I think, Councilman Pollocka's intent to perhaps have this issue corrected in the charter so it would not be confusing or misleading. The second issue was as it relates to a inconsistency between the way the state election law looked at counting nominating petitions and the language of the city charter. And the draft before you this evening provides the text as it relates to the counting of nominating petition that's used in the general election law, so that there is not a, a question, really, for, for somebody as it relates to which rule applies. It would be the election law. Should council decide that it wishes to have this matter placed before the electors in November, this ma, this proposed resolution would be forwarded both to the governor as well as the attorney general for their review, consistent with the Home Rule Cities Act. And one final item, I think it would, should you wish it to be considered at this November election, it would have to be approved this evening, given the timeline for questions to the, to be placed on the November ballot.
Just by way of background, do you want to share?
Well, here's...
I know you shared last meeting.
Yeah.
We're up late reading the charter.
When I get bored, I like to read the charter. So, if I can give an example, in this current election period, we have three candidates that are running for city council. Dan Martin, Raylan Leaksme, and William White. And the state law states that a registered voter can vote for two, or can sign two of the three candidates' petitions for them to be on the ballot. If you sign the third, then that third signature is invalid, but the first two are valid. Within the city of Ferndale, all three signatures are invalid. So, ours are a bit more restrictive, and the issue that we have, and I've had conversation with our, our city clerk, is that we use the state system to validate signatures. So, when we put all the information into the system, it comes back and tells us that there were two signatures that were, two additional signatures that were invalid. But then, our department, our city clerk's office, has to then go through all of the petitions and find the, the same signatures on the other two candidates and remove those. So, they're doing additional work, which I don't feel is really necessary. So, this, this change would correct that discrepancy between the city law and the state law.
So, I guess one of my questions, and maybe this is to you, Dan, is, because I also am probably just nerdy enough that I read the charter occasionally, just to see what's in there, and there's, there's a number of things that could probably be tightened up and clarified. There are things over time where the charter gets outdated. When something in the charter, I don't want to call this minor, because it's important at the time that it's, but, you know, relative to all the things in the charter, it's relatively minor. But when something like that, that we discover in the charter is sort of inconsistent with state law, because I think there's a number of these things, is, is, my understanding, I guess, is that the general rule is that, that state law would, would supersede the local ordinance?
To the extent that there's a conflict.
To the extent that there's a conflict.
If, if it is, and if it's only more restrictive, and it, it doesn't render the state statute, the state statute does supersede local ordinance, but local ordinance can be more restrictive as long as it's not in conflict. And so, the question then is, is a certain language a conflict, or is it just more restrictive? And it potentially, you know, the cases are very fact-specific as it relates to that analysis. So, you know, that, there, there are, as you say, Mayor, certain changes, you know, the particular change that's being proposed now was, it actually only became effective until twenty fourteen, as it relates to the, the deadline for nominating petitions. So, so, general election law changes over time, and it, it, as a house, this, this, I would say, would be, is really mostly a housekeeping issue, just to, to bring it more in line with the, the state election law.
So, let me ask a clarification question. Without putting this on the ballot to change it, the city clerk would still be fine defaulting to state rules?
As it relates to the first part, there's two changes.
Right, right, right.
As it relates to the deadline for the nominating petitions, yes. As it relates to the second issue, it's a closer question. As it relates to, and Councilman Pollocka summarized the, the second part, it actually, the, the language of the state law is if there's several nominating, if there's a couple of positions open, and more nominating petitions signed by an individual than those, than number of spaces, all of them are rejected if they're signed on the same day. If, if less than, if, if, if there was three spots and, and two of, two of them were, three of them were signed on the first day, and then another one was signed on the fourth day, just that one that was on the fourth day would be, be deleted. So, that's a complicated area. Certainly, the comment that it might make it easier for the clerk's office to administer, I think, is a valid point.
Can I ask you your opinion on the signature portion? Do you believe that our ordinance is in conflict with the state law?
Well, I, I, I think that it is not, it certainly doesn't mirror the state law, and I, I think an argument could be made that it is a conflict, yeah.
But with the way the state law, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. When I go in, and let's say I find, will it electronically tell me there were, in this example, three signed on the same day, so that all would have to be wiped? Or no matter what, the city clerk would still have to go through the petitions and find the date of the signature?
Those would be on the nominating petitions. They'd, they'd sign the date.
So, you'd have to go through all the petitions anyway if there's a conflict? Is that right?
Well, the way the software works is, it will pick up if someone signs the same person's. It'll automatically pick that up. But we do end up having to go through.
But would you have to anyway, under state law?
Yeah.
Because you'd have to find out if the dates were the same on all three?
Yeah.
Don't mean that we'd do much more.
So, so I guess my point is, and, because I'm not opposed to putting it on the ballot if, if, if that's necessary, but if, if you're saying, maybe reluctantly, that yes, you think it's a conflict, which means state law would, would supersede the local ordinance, and Marnie could just, could just follow state law?
The second one's a close question, and the question is, would somebody challenge that issue? And would, as it relates to some action to the county for superintendent control as it relates to the question of eligibility to be on a ballot? I mean, because while I, I think that there's a strong ar, argument that you could say that it's in conflict, the other argument is, no, it's just simply more restrictive. And it's not...
Other comments or questions?
Not really.
And one of the reasons that I brought it up is because, you know, we already have an election. Adding this to the ballot is not going to create any additional work or cost, you know, to the city.
No, I agree. And, and in fact, it, maybe it was my first year as mayor, or second, where we actually talked about possibly putting a group, a committee together where we went through the charter and caught all sorts of these more housekeeping-type items, and sort of did a number of them, a package of them on the ballot that may or may not be preferable. But we, we certainly, I mean, these kinds of things are going to happen, so I think it was good of you to catch it. I, I guess my question is just, can we just tell Marnie to follow state law and make that publicly known, and add this to our housekeeping groups when we put that together, if we do? I, I, I'm relatively indifferent, frankly, but maybe I'm, I'm leaning towards that.
You know, just on that point, though, housekeeping, if you have too many subjects, it does become a complicated question. You have to have a question on each issue.
Correct. That's true. That's, that's true. Well, either questions or a motion would be in order. Is there a motion?
I'm trying to figure out where it's written. The way that it's written, I think I have to read the whole thing.
Can we just as presented?
Make a, a motion to adopt the following resolution as presented.
Right. All right. Is there, is there support?
Yeah.
Moved by Pollocka and supported by Lennon. Any other discussion, or any discussion by, comments by members of the audience as well? If not, Marnie, call the roll.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton.
Yes. Thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to call to council. I see our fire chief is here this evening. Chief Sullivan, anything for the good of the community?
Yes, Your Honor, council. We recently had a garage fire which destroyed a resident in Ferndale's garage and his car. And we found through investigation that he had cleaned his fire pit out and stored the ash into a paper bag and put it into his garage. So, I would once again remind people that fire pits and fireplaces, when cleaned out, should go into a metal container. You should put water in the container and store the container outside, away from anything that's combustible. One ember buried deep will not give any smoke, or you might not even feel any heat, but if it's near anything combustible, such as a paper bag, it will eventually start fire and get its own oxygen and do a lot. The fireball was quite extensive. It was probably a good eighty to a hundred feet into the air, and damaged a couple green trees, burnt the lawn, burnt plants and gardens, and the area melted all the siding on his house, which was a good forty, fifty feet away from the garage. So, it could have been a lot worse. Everybody was sleeping, woke up to the sound of destructiveness as the fire's energy ate the garage and car. So, just a reminder, New York should also have a permit for your fire pit.
Thank you.
And if you're going to do that, please clean them out into a metal container. Don't put it anywhere near a building or in a building. And put water in the container, just to make sure all the embers out before disposing of them.
I might add, Chief, that through social media, I read that your firemen did a spectacular job saving a lot of other property.
Yeah. They stopped it where it was, but it was starting to melt and catch other things on fire in the immediate area, so they did a heck of a job for the wee hour fire. Yeah, they did. Thank you, Councilman.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Chief Collins isn't here, but Lieutenant O'Block, O'Blocklin is here. Anything from the police department for us this evening?
I don't, sir.
All right. Thank you. Cindy, we've heard from. Kara, anything from community engagement this evening? All right. Jenny, how about from HR? No. Jill, anything from recreation department? Wow, everybody's quick. All right. Lloyd, DPW?
Oh, good luck.
All right. Joe?
I have a question, if you don't mind, of, of Lloyd.
Yep.
Lots, sorry. Lots and lots of people are asking me, where's the dog park?
Three weeks out, we are ordering handicap-accessible gates and hardware. It's not in yet. We're moving along in that direction. We're just waiting for the supplies to come in. DPW is doing a lot of the groundwork now.
Okay. Yeah, I was wondering about water and electricity.
Yeah. The electricity's going to be a little bit more work, but with water, we're tapping, including the drainage that will be needed.
Okay. Yeah, getting a lot of comments on social media about it.
People are anxious.
Yes, they are.
She's a good thing, yes.
Lloyd, I got a quick question. Joe informs me you're going to have those signs ready for, about the Craigslist signs ready this week?
Yes.
So Kara could do a...
Yes.
First lease?
Okay. Not a problem. We'll, we'll do.
Thank you, sir. You bet.
Excellent. Thanks, Lloyd. Speaking of Joe, anything from the innovation office this evening?
I do, I got one announcement. We do expect residents to submit online payments again for their water bills. We do expect that to be launched next week. I just want to highlight...
Never thought I'd be so happy to pay my water bill.
Right? And you'll, you'll pay it with more zest. The new and improved online payment allows you to view your current and past bills, much like your consumer's energy or DTE bill. You can kind of look at a bar graph, see what your past usage is, what your average usage is. And you can also look up your information without submitting your account number every time now. You would just, exactly, you would create a profile once, enter your account number once, that one time, but then from there on, you just log in like you would any other online account, and submit your payment, and look at all of your current history. We will also be launching a twenty-four-hour online phone payment option for residents who wish to pay for any payments that they would pay, whether it be utility payments or summer and winter tax payments. Anytime you wanted to, you could submit a payment. You just need your account number. You would call eight-six-six-eight-seven-three-nine-one-five-seven. Don't worry, we are putting that on the website. We are going to be mailing out a letter to residents, talking about all these new benefits and ways to pay that the city is providing you. So, we thank you for your patience, but the process should be much improved, and you can again expect this to be back online available next Monday.
Is it a separate mailing you're doing?
Pardon?
Is that a separate mailing you're doing?
Yeah, we're going to be sending out an actual mailing to all residents and landlords.
When's the next newsletter go out?
Quarterly.
Well, September, probably. October? September.
Early September. But we want to make sure that residents, we know it's been a very frustrating time for them, so we want to make sure that they're aware of all the payment options, and we get that communication out to them.
How much does a citywide mailing cost us?
We are getting quotes for, right now, for that.
All right, just, this is just, take it for what it's worth. My personal opinion would be not to do and save the money on a citywide mailing. Put it on social media and include it on the next newsletter, because by the time you get the mailing together and get out, you're only talking about three or four weeks. So, I would, I would use the free methods of communicating that, or where we're already spending money on the newsletter versus a citywide mailing. I just don't think the bank's for the buck.
I agree.
Otherwise, thank you. That's good news.
Yeah, that's great news. Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. Marnie, anything from the city clerk's office?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. Wow, everybody's so quiet. April, city manager's office has got something going on.
Actually, not much. I do want to offer congratulations to Jenny, who was married on July twelfth, and who can refer to her as Jenny Campos. So, congratulations, Jenny.
Say the last name again?
Campos.
Campos? Awesome. Congratulations, Jenny. Yes. All right. Dan, anything from the, anything else?
Just one item. There, there, I, I will have, hopefully for council's next meeting, a draft ordinance to allow dogs in a park to be off-leash if they're in an enclosed hysteria. So, currently, they're not allowed to be off-leash.
Speaking of dog parks?
And the dog park.
Yes.
Exactly. That'll be for your consideration next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Mayor Proton, Martin?
I have nothing this evening.
I have nothing this evening.
Nothing, wow.
Usually, I don't have anything, but I do. Had a great time at the Pick 'n Whiskey. Think I'm still sweating from it. However, there was, I spoke to our colleague, Diana, while she was up north, and she had an issue too, with the use of public parking. Some of our residents and business owners were asked to pay ten dollars to go to the library. Trust me, this will not happen again. Good thing Melanie's not here right now, because she'd be going off on it too. I had a long conversation with her. So, yeah, she, I don't know if she contacted you April or not that day?
Yep.
Yeah, I think so, we're all aware, but they got past us and...
Yeah, that was an unusual, can you?
Yeah.
Maybe, Joe, you want to just address the parking issue at Pick 'n Whiskey? That would be, that'd be great, thank you.
So, during this year's special event, application by the Pick 'n Whiskey, there was discussion of a need to, let me preface that with this, typically, during the Pick 'n Whiskey, Ferndale Care raises funds by parking, using the Credit Union One parking structure to raise funds, a ten-dollar per entrance. They lost that this year while Credit Union One's deck was under construction. Knowing this ahead of time during the special event process, the committee did approve of the use of the city hall lot, specifically just the city hall lot. People who would park there would pay ten dollars towards a donation that would go specifically to Ferndale Care, and the people that did actually pay were given a brochure about what their money goes toward with Ferndale Care. We did recognize that there were some definite communication gaps and some management gaps that certainly would be, need to be taken, that would need to be taken place if the city were to accommodate any fundraising for a nonprofit or a charity like this again. We do intend on working through that for any future special event process, absolutely.
I understand.
But I did want to clarify that none of the ten-dollar funds went to the city coffers, so...
Oh, we understand that, but, I mean, our residents don't want to use the library that day, should not have to be charged.
I understand.
But we could correct that down the road, tweak it. And like you, and everybody else here, we all belong to probably Ferndale Forum, Ferndale Forum Two, and whatever they got.
There's fume.
As I read through these, I've seen so many people reporting crimes in progress on Ferndale Forum. They're not calling Lieutenant O'Blocklin. They're saying, I just saw a guy stole my Cadillac converter. I just saw somebody take my neighbor's bike. Folks, call the Ferndale Police Department, okay? We can take these people off the street, correct, Casey?
I got him, buddy.
Yeah.
It does happen more than I think a lot of people realize, and yes, please call nine-one-one when it's an emergency such as a crime in progress. Otherwise, use the business line, but we'll take reports all the time, and they'll tell us. We saw it last night, or they'll talk to the neighbor, and the neighbor's like, well, I saw someone after last night. If you see something suspicious, you know what's going on in your neighborhood, please call us. The officers are polite, and if it's up to nothing, if it's nothing, they'll explain to people why they stopped them and what's happening, and most of those people appreciate the efforts we do to try to thwart crime and stop it, so please don't go on social media.
Right.
Please call us.
And just to reemphasize that, because a lot of people think, well, I don't know if it's a crime or not. I think you still want, if it's suspicious, if it seems unusual. You guys aren't annoyed by calls like that, are you, sir?
No, the right policy and the good policy is better safety.
That's right.
So, call us, and that's what we're there for.
Thank you.
Don't hesitate.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
I'm done, I'm done burying.
All right, Councilman Pollocka?
I have a couple of things, but I do want to make a comment. The sad thing is, is that anyone under the age of thirty doesn't use their phone as a phone. So, first, I want to thank Kevin and Joe. I had a resident on Leroy today contact me in regards to some businesses that were parking on Leroy, and I guess have been for a while. It's been interfering with the residential parking on the street, and Kevin, I appreciate you getting ahold of the resident and starting that communication and that process, Joe, as well. Second, Ferndale Historical Society, membership, ten dollars, good for a year. You get four quarterly newsletters that give a great history of Ferndale. If you've never been to the museum, you should check it out. There's a lot more than you would ever believe was collected for Ferndale in that little itty-bitty building. Applications are here at City Hall upstairs. And last but not least, I want to congratulate some dear friends, longtime Ferndale residents, James Whipple and Carl Wheeler, who were married yesterday, so...
Oh, excellent. Where were they married?
Zion.
Zion. I only ask because I had the honor of performing four marriages last week, and very excited to say, two of them were from same-sex couples. One of the couples had been together for thirty years and another couple for twenty-two years, so I was very privileged to take part in those and all of the weddings that I did.
Well, and that's James and Carl, they've been together, well, I've known them for twenty-some years, and they've been together, so I'm assuming it's another twenty-five to thirty years, maybe longer. But the interesting thing was, the priest at Zion had said to them, I'll marry you when it becomes legal, so they took him upon it.
Hope he really meant it, yes.
That's all I have.
All right, excellent. A couple of things, it is July, which means a lot of residents are getting their July tax bills. Unless you're like me and it gets escrowed, but a lot of you actually get your actual bills, and I just, I want to point this out because I'm not sure a lot of residents notice, but we were, through our financial management and the Mayfest ballot initiative that the residents approved, were able to lower taxes by two full-mills in this community, and so take a look at that bill, compare it to what your bill was last year, because most all of you will have seen a reduction, and I'm very proud of that. This council and this staff in particular, more than the council, works very hard to try to keep funds spent properly and keep costs down, and it should be reflected in your July bills, and I just want to point that out, because I don't think that gets enough attention. Secondly, the gentleman talked about the development process for parking in our downtown. I will just share with the residents that there is work going on, sort of at the staff level, as to how to move forward with what the next proposed development should be and will be, and that is being worked on. I will say that it's my expectation that that will include a request for proposal component to it, that we will invite various developers to participate in that, so I would expect that that's part of that. But stay tuned, because we're getting close to being able to announce a timeline and a process for moving forward with the development for increased parking, as well as whatever other components might be attached to that shortly, so I wanted to address that because of the gentleman's concerns earlier. And with that, meeting is adjourned.